Privilege to recognize the Reverend Ben Acton, who is the new pastor of the First Presbyterian Church here in Garner. I had the privilege of attending his induction ceremony a couple of weeks ago and a chance to meet him, and I told him I wanted to get him out here so others could see him and ask him tonight to offer our invocation. So, thank you very much Reverend Acton for being here.
Thank you. Let us pray.
Lord, you are the authority over every nation. You rule the ways of peoples everywhere. You govern all earthly governments. So, work with those who work for peace. Make every person an authority and agent of your reconciliation, justice, and hope, so that all may know their dignity as your children, created in your image, and also know their dignity as citizens of this earth. Bring peace and goodwill among all people, fulfilling among us the promise made in Jesus Christ, who was born to save the world. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor, do you want to...
Ordinarily, we offer you the opportunity to say anything you'd like to about your church missions and stuff going on over there at this time?
Math is not my strong suit, friends, but I was trying to count up. It's been about two months and 20 days since I first came to Garner, so it is simply my humble privilege to be here in these halls today and to get to see you face to face. First Presbyterian Church of Garner has been around for about 60 years, just the corner of Lakeside and Lake Benson Road, and we are doing stuff and God is doing stuff there, and we invite anyone to come out and see us and see how we're putting our faith into action for this community and for the world. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next is petitions and comments. That is time on the agenda for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the night's agenda. If you wish to address the council, go to the podium, state your name and address. You may make your comments. Does anyone want to make any comments? On an item not on the agenda. Adopted on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda as it stands if there is any reason.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed. Next is a presentation made by Councilmember Buck Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege to be able to read this proclamation tonight. As we are meeting now, the Daughters of the American Revolution are holding their monthly meeting, at which time this proclamation will be read. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America; and whereas it is of the utmost importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment; and whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention; and whereas Public Law 9515 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week; and whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside the week of September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into law on August the 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight David Eisenhower. Therefore, Ronnie Williams, Mayor of the town of Garner, does hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week in Garner, and urges all citizens to affirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, the mayor has signed it and bears the town seal.
Good job, Buck. Any other comments? Any comments here on the Constitution? It's a wonderful document that has sustained itself over time, even though it's been under stress at various times. Okie doke. Next on the agenda is consent items. Does anyone wish to pull one of those?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed. Now, there are four public hearings. The first one is conditional use zoning, CUDZ 1803, and conditional use permit, SP 1807. I'm going to open the public hearing, call on the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor has said there are four matters that are going to be heard in sequence here that are of a similar nature in terms of the procedures that will be used, and it's my duty as town attorney to give you a little information about what is going to be going on for the next hour or two to allow you to appreciate where you might fit into these proceedings. Each one of these, beginning with the Bannister one and continuing through the Harper's Landing, the S.T. Wooton, and the Oak City Academy, each one of these has two applications that will be heard. The first application is an application to establish a zoning change for the property. This is a type of zoning called conditional use zoning, in which, as the planning department, which presents this, will explain to you, the property owner is imposing various conditions on the proposal to throw out or delete some of the uses that might otherwise exist in the particular zoning category. And when the conditional use rezoning matter is heard, the staff will give some testimony and lay out the issues and the facts in the case. The applicant may make comments on the zoning, and any member of the public who wishes to make comments on the zoning. This zoning is what the law calls a legislative duty of the town council, and like in any legislative proceeding, the public may speak, and the legislative body, the town council here, will take action on the rezoning based on what is in the best interest of the community. If a conditional use zoning application is approved and the property is re-zoned to a conditional use, the next step is that that property has to have what is known as a conditional use permit. Now, what this involves is having a site plan that shows how the property is going to be used, how it's going to be laid out, shows something about the buildings, the parking, answers different questions that may exist about that sort of thing. In the conditional use permit part of this case, that is what the law calls a quasi-judicial proceeding. Quasi-judicial means sort of like a court. What it means is there are some formalities that have to be followed during that particular part of the proceeding, and those formalities include that the testimony will be given on oath or affirmation, and that the testimony will be given by people who, by virtue of education experience, training, have qualifications to give expert opinions on various matters. You'll hear testimony on landscaping, traffic, parking lot design, whatever comes up in a given case. Those areas are reserved to expert opinion, and those people who give all that testimony must be, as I say, sworn. There are a couple of other formalities. The law requires that the council be free of any preconceived opinions and is able to give a fair and honest, fair and impartial decision on each such case, and also requires that if there has been any contact between any party, the applicant, members of the public, whatever, with a council person, that council person needs to disclose those contacts. So, the first thing I will do is ask the people who plan to testify in the Bannister case to come forward. Well, the clerk suggests we get everybody up here. Let's see if we got room up here. We'll let everybody who plans to give expert testimony in the Bannister case, the Harper's Landing case, the S.T. Wooton case, and the Oak City Academy case come up and... Clerk will take care of this and handle it for you. Mr. Mayor, I'll inquire of the council whether anyone has any ex parte communications to disclose, or whether anyone has any preconceived opinions that would prevent them from giving a fair and impartial decision in this matter. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll need to recuse myself from the vote on the Oak City Academy as I'm a member of the Capitol charge.
Very good. Anything else, anybody? All right. Mr. Mayor, we ready to proceed then?
Okie doke. David. Mr. Banford will present the town's perspective on this.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional use application. My name is David Banford with the chair of Garner Planning Department, and this has a rezoning and a site plan for review. The site is located on Timber Drive East, and it is approximately six acres in size. The planning commission did review this case on August the 13th and did recommend approval. This is a map of the project site outlined in orange. This is Timber Drive East, heading east, and NC 50 is on the left side of the map. Hillendale subdivision is to the south, and to the north, we have some vacant undeveloped tracks. This is a view of the site looking west on Timber Drive East. This map shows the existing zoning in this area of Garner. The property is Zone R 20, which is a single-family zoning district. The property to the west is Zone Neighborhood Office, and that was rezoned and developed into an office center within the last year. The predominant zoning is R 20 in this area to the north, the undeveloped tracks, Hillendale subdivision is Zone R 20. We do have commercial zoning, community retail, that is shown here in pink on the map. This is to the east, and it extends over to White Oak Road and all the way north to Highway 70. This chart lists all the zoning cases in this area of Garner. These are conditional use applications. The oldest one on file we have is from 1993, and the most recent one was 2016, which was the office center that was developed directly to the west. The existing R 20 zoning is single-family, and the density is just over two units an acre. The requested zoning classification is neighborhood commercial, conditional use, District 202, and the proposed use would be office with limited retail uses. This is a list of the zoning conditions that are proposed for this project. The uses that are highlighted in yellow would be uses that would be prohibited on the site. All other uses would be permissible. At the bottom of the center column, we have restaurants, takeout, drive-through, or walk-up. That is a permissible use within the Timber Drive East overlay district. However, it is restricted where drive-through windows should not face directly on Timber Drive East. In addition to use restrictions, the applicant is also proposing the following conditions. On the site plan, which will be discussed in a little bit, they are proposing four buildings, and so one of the conditions is no more than 50% of the total approved building square footage can be used for the following allowed retail uses. So, this is in addition to office. Office would be permissible on the entire site. However, a few retail uses allowed in neighborhood commercial would be limited to only 50% of the approved building square footage, and those are listed here. Convenience stores without fuel cells, personal service, hair and beauty salons, bank and financial institutions, repair-oriented uses, sales-oriented uses, indoor operations only, and indoor veterinary or kennels. No other neighborhood commercial uses would be permissible. The site is within the Timber Drive East overlay district, and the only use that is permissible that has a restriction is restaurants with drive-in windows or drive-through service. In those, if any, if a use like that were to be approved on the site, it would have to not have the drive-through visible from Timber Drive East, and would also have to be rezoned and added in. It is a, let's say, it is a permissible use, so... Traffic, the site does have frontage along Timber Drive East, which is an NCDOT maintained facility, and Timber Drive East has a right-of-way of around 110 feet in width. This road has curb gutter and sidewalks, and as of right now, there are no NCDOT traffic counts. The last traffic counts we have are from 2015, and we expect the 2017 traffic counts to be released any time now from NCDOT, and hopefully those will have some counts on Timber Drive East. This is the long-range plan of the Garner Forward Long Range Plan, which was just adopted in June. The Garner Forward Plan designates this area as office center. To the north on Timber Drive East, the Garner Forward Plan designates this area as mixed activity center. And this ring here is part of the circle, and this just shows that we expect this area to redevelop in the future. There is a large area of vacant undeveloped land, and that will change. So, on the Garner Forward Plan, we show the area around Timber Drive East and White Oak Road as a future redevelopment activity center. This request is consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed use in zoning is also consistent with the development pattern along Timber Drive East and also compatible with the site next door. And I will stop there, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on the zoning case, and Stacy will give up, will come up and give the presentation on the proposed site plan.
Very good. Councilmembers have questions? Take them away, David.
Now, I wonder if the applicant would like to speak on the zoning, then the public can come speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joe Faulkner with the CE Group, 301 Glenwood Avenue, Raleigh. I'll just keep this brief. The intent for this rezoning is, again, to provide additional flexibility other than just office use for the site, and that's why we limited the different types of retail uses that would be allowed. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Public wish to be heard on the Bannister proposal. All right, we'll then move to the conditional use permit, and staff will give a report on that.
Good evening. Again, before you is the Bannister site. This is an office retail flex space with four buildings that equal about 42,000 square feet, so about 10,500 square feet each. The landscape requirements are met with a combination of existing and replacement trees, but the tree coverage requirement will be exceeded at 13.4%. The buffers were identified, the street buffer was met by adding new plant material, and the perimeter buffers, which vary depending on the adjacent uses, from 15 to 35 feet wide, are met with a combination of mostly existing trees, but also new planting, especially shrubs. The 15-foot buffer is adjacent to the community retail and neighborhood office zoning, and the 35 foot is adjacent to R 20, and you'll see as we get through the site plan. Parking is based on one space for every 200 square feet, so there's 210 spaces with seven accessible required. They have provided on the site plan 215 spaces with eight accessible spaces. The inspections department, together with the fire department, have reviewed and approved this site plan. There are no FEMA floodplain areas on the site, and the site slopes generally to the The stormwater management part of the site plan, it is subject to both water quantity and quality regulations, excuse me. The developer is proposing one wet retention pond that handles detention of the 110 and 25-year storm events, and the stormwater control measure will reduce the nitrogen below the allowable threshold of the 10 pounds per acre per year. There will be a nitrogen offset payment required. The site will connect to existing public water and sewer. There's a 16-inch water line that they will have extended to the property, and sewer extends to the site currently. The driveway will have to be approved by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the onsite sidewalks that are provided internally do have a connection to the public sidewalk on Timber Drive East. The site has one controlled access, which is a right in and right out onto Timber Drive East. There you see the site plan with the blue being their access and with a stub out to the adjacent properties, and the right in, right out to Timber Drive East. The four buildings, they have parking in the middle of each set of buildings as well as behind the buildings, and then the green is your stormwater pond. The lighting is proposed does conform to the UDO. The site was done by Duke Energy for the lighting. The site plan conforming with the Garner Transportation Plan, Timber Drive East is identified as a four-lane divided road, and in its existing configuration is improved to standards identified in the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. Therefore, the site may be found in conformity with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. There were no recommendations for the site with the Parks and Rec, Open Space, and Greenways Plan, so therefore it may be found in conformance with that plan. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, July 17th. There were 39 properties that were notified, which are the same properties that we notified for the hearing, and the owners of three properties did come to that neighborhood meeting, and they talked about screening, lighting, and security, light pollution, and some of the screening along the back of the property. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, and the planning commission did confirm staff's findings that the plan was in conformity with the adopted town plans and policies, and further accepted staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Comprehensive Growth Plan as their own and recommended The action is to refer, you can refer to your worksheet beginning on page 26 of your packet for the motion to approve or deny CUDZ 1803, and page 28 of your packet for a motion to approve or deny CUP SP 1807, Bannister Professional Center. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant again is here as well.
I have a quick question. You may have covered this. Can you tell me what the spacing, what the distance is from the backside of the property to the residential area that's behind there, or maybe what the buffering zone is?
This one has a 35-foot buffer behind it, behind the stormwater pond, and adjacent to the R 20 zoning.
Okay, from the retention pond?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Could you turn back to the section where you had the water and sewage connection? Water and sewage?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone from the public?
Voice to the first. The applicant, Mr. Mayor. Let's let the applicant first, and then the public come in.
Very good, very good.
Anyone from the applicant, keep it in usual order. Thank you.
Yeah, the sewer water that, I'm not sure if you had any questions regarding that, but sewer is extended to the very westernmost part of the site, and we'll be taking it all the way and providing a stub out to the easternmost part, such that it can be extended further in the future. The water main is a 16-inch water main that will be extended across the frontage over on the church property across the street, and then we'll have to bore to serve an 8-inch line to the site. And then we'll have to bore to serve an 8-inch line to the site. We did have a neighborhood meeting. At that meeting, there were concerns regarding light pollution and screening. After that meeting, one of the things we, you know, one of the things, I think, that causes the light pollution to a certain degree is the ordinance that you have has a 4-to-1 average to minimum ratio requirement. And so what that means is, it makes for more even lighting, but at the same time, when doing that modeling, it will create, overall, a brighter sight, to where you can't have a place in maybe one of the corners of the parking area that maybe had a half-foot candle relative to getting that average. So, but in response to that comment from the adjacent neighbor, we did show that all the lighting would be shielded to help, aid in preventing that light pollution even further. There was also concern regarding the neighbor in this area here. And we came back with 17, just to provide additional screening. We came back with a row of giant arbor body, green giant arbor body along there to provide additional screening. We do have a 6-foot wooden screen fence around the proposed retention pond. We are providing also cross-access from each end to the property, such that the future connections on the CR Zone property to the east can be connected to, and we're connecting into the existing driveway of the neighborhood office to the west. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone now wish to address the council?
Good afternoon. I'm the adjacent house, 607 Hillendale. It is not 35-foot buffer. My property line goes out, I measured it out. It's 20 feet from where they have the temporary fence up.
Let me state your name and address.
What's that?
State your name and address for the record.
Robert Gregory, 607 Hillendale Lane.
Thank you, please continue.
For one, when we first moved here, they said the church owned that, and they were building it, so we were misled. So now we're getting through all this. The lighting that you've already built on the adjacent property that's right next to it, the lights are on all night. You can say that it's a candlelit. I can take pictures for you. It lights up my whole backyard. It's really ridiculous. With this today's technology, I don't know why we can't have sensors, or if people pulled up, if you had vandalism, we have cameras now. I don't understand why they have to be on all night long. That's one. Number two, the pond that you want to put behind my house, I have an in-ground pool. I'm the only one on the block that has that. I don't need people, I don't need mosquito haven to happen in my backyard. I know there's only seven residents right here that can't make this not happen. I know it's going to become a commercial zone, but it's a residential zone. If you seven people were living behind there, would you want this business there? Would you want your privacy? I'm just saying. They don't want to build a fence. Build a 7-foot fence so my daughter, that's running around her bathing suit at my pool, the guy at the dentist's office ain't sitting there staring at her. The 35-foot buffer trees you want to plant, it ain't going to work. I have 35-foot trees now. You can see through it. I need a fence put there. I don't need water behind my property. I don't need lights on at all times. So, I don't know why you're making this commercial building because somebody wants to build a business. I see all this property outside the zone that you could have a commercial property. You pick this one fine, but at least understand that if you live behind it, the security of your children, the lighting that comes into our yard, and the accessibility to get to my backyard, it's 35 feet is nothing for someone to run through. That's all I have to say.
Is someone going to come up and address? Or any of the concerns that gentleman had?
I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that or not.
Well, we gave an opportunity.
As far as the lighting being on 24 hours, is that, you know, I'm not sure what the office to the west, you know, I'm sure that part of that reasoning is for security purposes. Now, do they need all of them on? I'm not sure how, you know, being that those are leased lighting with Duke Energy, I'm not quite sure exactly how you can put some of them on a timer and some of them not on a timer. But we'd be happy to explore that option.
Okay.
I also live at 607 Hillendale, I'm his wife. I don't understand if there's another option besides the water for your runoff. This is the first time, when our neighbor came home with the diagram, I wasn't able to make it to the meeting. I was out of town. But that was the first time that I saw water is going to be in my backyard. We butt up, our property lines meet. So, what you're talking about, your drive-through, and you're concerned about it facing timber, I'm concerned about it facing my backyard. I moved here from California for a dark, quiet life where I can see the stars, and I waited my whole life to do that. I just got here in December, only to find out I'm going to have the Excalibur bright lights right in my backyard. No more dark, quiet night swims. Mosquitoes are, I mean, everybody's lived by standing water. You know it's a nightmare. Is there any other solution besides, I mean, the more, I was open-minded. We were told there was going to be a church built there when we bought the property. Seemed like a great thing. Maybe we could just walk through our backyard. So, this is evolving into the biggest nightmare. Obviously, people on our street are putting their house up for sale. The more details I find out about it, the more panicked and sad I am. I'm sitting here almost in tears, looking at what I was so excited about, my quiet country life turning into something commercial, where the drive-through can't be facing the busy street. What about my house? What about opening my bedroom window and not hearing, "Can I get your order"? I mean, nobody's brought up the residents. This is a neighborhood that you're putting your commercial businesses on, and there isn't much consideration for that. I don't hear a lot about the residents. And I'm sorry more of them aren't here, but honestly, most of them are over 80, and they're homebound. And this is where they're going to spend the last of their years. My next-door neighbor can't make it because he can't leave the home. So, he's going to spend his last years listening to this construction. And when it's finally done, if he makes it that long, he'll be bright and shining, finding his way to Timber Drive. So, could we please just consider the residents just a little more? And consider if this were your yard and where you came to raise your children and waited 50 years to do so, maybe you're devastated right now. And the more I hear through this meeting, the more devastated I'm becoming because there's not a lot of talk about the people that live on the other side of this swamp. So, please consider the residents in your decision.
I can address the stormwater just briefly. Stormwater pond is located here. There's an existing low area that does drain back this way. And that is why, if you look at our grading plan, you'll see the storm drainage actually projects out and then outlets at this spot, such that it's outletting at the same spot at which it goes today. We did design the pond to over-detain, such that it detains the difference between the predeveloped and post-developed peak rate for up to the 25-year storm event at that location. So, we are keeping water into, draining, flowing into the existing drainage way where it goes today. Yes, sir.
Mr. Faulkner, is there, what kind of fencing is around the pond?
That is a 6-foot-high opaque wooden fence.
All the way around?
It is around this side of it. This right here is a retaining wall, and that retaining wall varies in height. It's about 11 feet high in this location here. And it basically, trying to read, it goes from about, so it goes from 3 to 11 feet in height as you go across. So, this side of it is definitely higher up in elevation. It goes down, and then it goes slightly back up. But the properties here are lower in elevation relative to the development.
And on the south side, did you say it was about 6 feet? The height of the fence was?
It's a 6-foot wooden opaque fence, yes, sir. And it runs from the retaining wall all the way over and then back up. And then we've got the, if you look at the landscape plan, you'll see that we've added the 17 green giant arbor body that go across here, and they're planted on top, sort of on top of the berm or on the side, higher part of the slope.
Will anything be planted in the 35-foot buffer that's on the south side?
Shrubs and other material, as, we are taking credit for some of the existing trees, but we have shown shrubs that'll be planted in there to supplement that. And there is a diagram there of additional, you know, vegetation that could be, as planning staff sees fit after construction.
Thank you.
And can you indicate, I think Mr. Gregory, of course, expressed some concern about lighting, but I got the impression that has to do with lighting that's at the building that's already built there, just, was it west of there? Can you basically indicate on the schematic there, will the lightings be at the corner of the buildings? Or will they be on the back?
Well, again, you know, to meet that 4-to-1 ratio, which, you know, requires more lights, it does require more lights. And again, we've done a lot of lighting modeling in the past, but you've got lights that basically, you know, run along the edge of the parking, you know, right there as you see, so. But we, you know, I think one of the, we heard it, the, one of the neighbors that were adjacent to the existing facility that was at the neighborhood meeting had mentioned that they were waiting on the supposedly Duke Energy was supposed to be going in and installing the shields. And so that's why we called out that shielding on our plan, as such that they wouldn't have to do that after the fact. It would be implemented upfront. And hopefully, that, you know, will help the, you know, the LEDs, you know, I think everybody realizes how bright they are in general, no matter what the color are. And I think that's, you know, you don't have the high-pressure yellow sodium lights anymore, and even metal halide, I don't think are quite as bright as the new LEDs.
Hi, I'm Sandy Hackney, I'm at 605 Hillendale Lane. Just a few things. Already at the corner, we're higher above this proposed building. And to the left, like Robert said, it is like a beacon there with all those lights. I can see, actually on my porch, now that I'm enclosing, I can see into the lobby of that building, bright as day. I mean, we could wave to each other, as far as them at the receptionist's desk in my backyard. I'd like to have some fencing for security, not just around the retention pond, but all the way through. And I'd like it to be tall. I can appreciate that he's going to put some more landscaping trees in the portion behind my yard, that I know that will help. But there is still a buffer of trees that, the growth is very tall. They're thin, and there's not really any buffer there. So, even though there's a little bit, maybe 10-foot or 15-foot of buffer of trees already there, it's not really doing any shading or any buffering because they, all the growth is tall, and we're kind of above this whole center. So, it's going to be like we're kind of almost looking above the fence out to everybody. So, I just kind of maybe wanted to talk about, I know they have to do it per code for the lighting, but maybe we can get a special use to have the lighting, you know, reduced a little bit, or like Robert said, put on timers, or just a little something to dim those lights that are already there. And then especially a fence, I'd feel like somebody, all they'd have to do is park in that parking lot and walk back into my house and rob me, and it's just me and a little one. So, I wouldn't feel safe without at least a big, tall privacy fence there as well.
Mr. Attorney, got to finish off.
No, sir, no. Close the public hearing.
They close it?
You need to close the public hearing and then see if there's a vote.
Has everybody been given a chance to speak? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sensitive to the concerns of the residents there. We've seen this happen on any number of occasions. And I have a bright street light at my house now that shines pretty brightly. But at any rate, that whole zone area there meets the town's requirements as it relates to the Garner Forward Plan. That area is going to develop. I'm sympathetic to folks that we have dealt with in the past who said, "I bought this property. It was wooded. I'd like for it to stay wooded." But unfortunately, most of the areas in Wake County are not staying wooded unless you own the property, and then you retain the rights to what goes there. I think it's proper to go ahead and approve the rezoning. So, I'm going to move that the town council accept staff statement regarding zoning consistency with Comprehensive Growth Plan. Detailed in Section 5 of this report is our own, and I therefore move further that the town council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt order in its number, I believe it's 3925. Is that right, Madam Clerk? Approving rezoning request, CUDZ 1803.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay, next is the conditional use, CUDZ. Keep us on track now.
We got to do the CUP.
We're moving to C.
We need to do the CUP, see if there's a vote on the CUP for the Bannister property.
Okay, yeah, but we're leaving that out. Only, we've done the zoning, we're approaching the CUP SP 1807. Need a motion on that?
We got a motion on that, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Marsh, we've been since of this issue before, backing up to the neighborhood. I'd like to propose we add a condition, one, that the 6-foot privacy fence goes along the entire backboard, back property line that backs up to the adjacent Hillendale residents. So, it starts at one end, and the 6-foot privacy fence goes to the other. Solid wooden fence. It's almost half of it already, but surrounded the pond. So, you're just about doubling that, prop the fence. That would give them some protection with the fence and also a buffer.
So, what motion is made? Do you want to add this?
I want to add it as a condition, yes.
All right.
So, I'll go ahead and start, unless somebody else has got a comment.
Go ahead.
I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding planning consistency in Section 7 of this report is our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.1, 4.1 D, and therefore approve CUP SP 1807, Bannister Professional Center with the three standard options, and with one site specific condition listed, that condition being that the 6-foot-high solid wooden privacy fence runs the entire southern border of the property, which borders with the residents who live on Hillendale Road.
Say it. Kathy, did you have something?
I have a question about the lighting. What, if anything, can we do about ensuring that the lights are, I believe you said, shielded? That's rough, to have that kind of lighting coming in your backyard, in your windows. Generally, not always, but a lot of our bedrooms are on the back of the house, and we have children back there trying to sleep, and that's difficult. So, what can, can we have a conversation with Duke Energy? What can we do to mitigate this problem for them with the extreme lighting?
You consider a condition that the lights be shielded before they're turned on.
I'd like to add that as a condition, that the lights be shielded.
As part of the site plan, I think.
He'd be in there, but wouldn't hurt to emphasize it.
And we will staff at the, toward the end of the construction, when they do their inspection, that's one of the things they'll look for before the building is given a, property is given a C of occupancy, is the shielding of the lights as specified in the site plan.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with the motion that's been made? To, you know, add-ons, yeah, I've.
You want the shielded, you want the shielded lights added as a condition?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay, condition number two, or in the motion, would be for staff to work with the developer to make sure that the shields are applied to the lights before the CEO is issued.
I'll second the motion. Okay, motion made, second. All in favor of that motion, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, Bill, are we ready for the CUD now?
Mayor, understand that the IT man may need a hand.
He came.
He's ready to go.
He's ready.
We're ready to go, then. We will open the hearing in the, the second matter that involves conditional zoning, which is CUDZ eighteen-oh-five, and conditional use permit, CUP SB eighteen-zero-three, Harper's Landing. And Mr. Bamford of the staff will be giving the first report.
Okay. Motion, hearing open. Mr. Bamford.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. David Bamford, Town of Garner Planning Department. This is also a conditional use application with a rezoning and a conditional use subdivision plan, and the project is called Harper's Landing. And the project is approximately thirty-eight point two-four acres in size, is located on Clifford Road. The planning commission did review this application at their meeting on August the thirteenth and did recommend approval. The project boundary is highlighted in orange on this map. To the north is Clifford Road. Bryan Road starts here at Clifford and runs north and circles back around to White Oak Road. New Bethel Church Road runs to the south, and the South Garner High School is located on this site here. This is a view looking west on Clifford Road, and the project site is here. Bryan Road is located here to the right at this T-intersection. This map shows the existing zoning in this area of Garner. The property is there in R-20, which is a low-density, single-family district. It allows single-family homes on twenty thousand square foot lots. This is a density just over two units an acre. The, to the north, we have R-40 zoning. We also have some R-9 zoning to the northwest. This is the, a couple of single-family and rezoning projects were approved in the last two years. To the south, we have Oak Park, which is another project that was approved and re-zoned to R-9. We do have some service business zoning along Bryan Road, and this zoning was put in place many years ago, maybe twenty, twenty-five years ago. But there's no really active commercial use on those sites, I think just on outdoor storage. South Garner High School is zoned R-9. And the block between Clifford and New Bethel is zoned R-20. This list shows the conditional use rezoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest one on file we found was from nineteen-ninety-one, and the most recent one was two thousand seventeen. It was the zonings that were done on Clifford Road and also Bryan Road. Existing zoning is Residential Twenty, and the requested zoning district is R-9 Conditional Use District two-oh-four. And this would be a single-family zoning with some use in-site conditions. The use conditions are listed here, no uses are proposed to be excluded, so the entire list of R-9 uses would be permissible. And the developer has proposed some conditions that would apply to the development, and I'll try to run through these quickly. First one, each house must have a minimum heated square footage of one thousand five-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Each house must have a minimum one hundred square foot patio. The next condition has to do with the slab foundation, where it needs to be a stem wall with a minimum twelve inches of brick or stone veneer on the front and the sides. And there's some also conditions here that if, if some of the foundation sides are without brick or stone, then they shall be parched or textured and painted to match the siding on the home. Next condition has to do with the type of siding that would be on each home. The next condition has to do with the, the overhang, the eve overhang off the roof, at least ten inches. Each house must have carriage hardware or windows in the garage doors. And lastly, each house must have a two-car garage. So these are conditions that would apply to every house that would be developed as part of this project. This area is within the Swift Creek Conservation Overlay District, and there are some impervious limits for new single-family detached development, that limit is thirty percent. Clifford Road is an NCDOT maintained facility, it has a sixty-foot right-of-way in this area, and this road currently lacks curb gutter and sidewalks. The average daily traffic counts are reported here from, for two thousand nine, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen. This map shows the long-range plan from Garner Forward for this area of the community, and the predominant designation on the long-range plan is what we call medium-density residential. And the plan recommends single-family duplex, triplex, quadplex, or townhome style developments between a recommended density of two and a half to five units an acre. In summary, the requested zoning change to R-9 Conditional Use District C-two-oh-four is consistent with the two thousand eighteen Garner Forward Plan's recommendations of medium-density residential, and the proposed development is within that density range. And the proposed zoning is also compatible with other zonings in the area along New Bethel Church Road and Clifford Road and Bryan Road. And I'll stop there, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the zoning portion, and Allison will, will give the presentation on the conditional use subdivision plan.
Okay, we're ready. None of the council has any questions. Mr. Bamford, it'd be time for the applicant to, to present his witnesses.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Keith Roberts, two-oh-two Bonica Creek Drive in Garner. Appreciate the Stafford port done by Mr. Bamford. As was mentioned, we feel the site is in conformity with the area on your requested zoning, consistent with the surroundings, and also the long-range plan. One thing I will mention, based on the current zoning, as Mr. Bamford mentioned, it allows approximately two units per acre, and as you'll see on our proposed subdivision plan, we're actually less than two-point-three with the new zoning, but the new zoning will allow us to have approximately thirty percent open space. And I'm here with any questions.
Any questions?
Question.
I'm assuming, and this is partly for staff and partly for you, Keith, I'm assuming that there's water and sewer capacity for the type-one housing, and I reckon on the minimum size is fifteen hundred and fifty square feet.
Based on my conversation I've had with Mr. Charlton, the town engineer, sewer capacity is more than available, and I know I'll misquote these numbers, but it seems like he was telling me the current Garner usage, and this is from about a month ago, so I'm trying to have a little memory recall, is around two-point-seven million gallons per day, but our current capacity is around six-point-seven, which means we could basically rebuild Garner, triple the size of Garner based on the current available sewer capacity.
That almost places into my comment, it looks like we could have larger houses with more sewer.
Or more, or more houses.
If you're not, with your knowledge of the, of what's planned, what percentage do you think will be down at that fifteen hundred and fifty square foot size?
I'll, I'll have to defer, the decline is here, and when we get into the, so that we can do it now or wait for the subdivision part, I cannot answer that, but decline is available.
Since some questions were raised, also, is it, is it essentially, well, it was stated in the presentation about the, the siding, will they, will the majority of the houses also be vinyl siding?
Again, I'll have to defer to the, to the builder.
Yeah, the builder come, I mean, this is part of, that's part of the conditional signings, I.
Good evening, Doug Schwartz, one-oh-five Country Mill Way, Fuqua. I'm with KB Homes. Question about the size of the homes, that's a minimum for us. We would expect this neighborhood to build out about twenty-five or twenty-seven hundred square feet, our market study says that. That's about what D.R. Horton's doing across the street, that's about what Roy Look is, is doing at the other end of Clifford Road, that seems to be what the market is really wanting and, and demanding there. So that's what we'd expect, and we expect, you didn't ask about prices, planning commission asked about that, we expect most of these homes will be from the low three-hundreds to the high three-hundreds. It's not down and dirty product, but it's not extravagant product either. Siding will be vinyl siding, and the planning staff asked us to do upgraded siding associated with that.
Hang on just a minute, the, if, if the average size will be in the range of twenty-five hundred, is there, I've never developed subdivision, I've seen plenty of them developed, and all the itinerant work that goes along with it, but, and haven't put my dollars at risk in trying to decide what, or forecast what the market's going to do. But we've got two types of allocations, one for the, for the smaller-sized home, one for the larger-sized home. Was there no allocation available for the, for the type-two housing?
There, there is allocation for the type-two. Type-one and type-two is both available, is my understanding.
Answered the questions, thank you.
Type-two would have required them to commit to a certain square footage of housing, I guess larger than what they're proposing?
I think the limit's twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Jones, you ready for the CUDZ?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna do the subdivision part of this project. As Davis stated earlier, the acreage of this parent parcel is thirty, thirty-eight point two-four acres, is being developed with single-family uses, and minimum lot size is nine thousand square feet, with the twenty percent reduction allowed for adjacent properties to the conservation or riparian buffer areas, that reduced number seven-two-hundred square feet. The landscaping and buffer requirements, the tree cover requirements were met, the twelve percent tree requirements were met with proposed material. There are no street buffers required, however, the developer has committed to put an enhanced streetscape that's going to be fronting along Clifford Road. The fire and inspections department reviewed this plan and have approved it as is stated. There are no FEMA floodplain areas on this site to be concerned about. The stormwater management, this site is subject to stormwater quality regulations for nitrogen, as well as stormwater quantity regulations for detention of the one, ten, twenty, five, and hundred-year storms. A dry detention pond is being proposed as a stormwater control measure that will handle stormwater quantity requirements at the site. Since this development is under the required six pounds per acre per year threshold for nitrogen, the developer has elected to purchase nitrogen offset buy-down to reach a three-point-six per acre threshold, rather than implement a water quality stormwater measure to treat nitrogen. I think somebody questioned about the water and sewer earlier, but the site will be served by public water and sewer. There is a sixteen, I'm assuming probably sixteen-inch water main line to the north, not sixteen-foot, that's a very large water main line, and the eight-inch sewer main to the east of the project site. DOT has approved the, the driveways, and on Clifford Road side, there will be onsite sidewalks connecting, we're not connecting to anything, but at some point we'll be connected to all everything once that area has been developed. And this is the overall site plan for this particular project. And just the, the dark hash is just the, the riparian buffer and the conservation they were talking about earlier, and my slides, when I say some, some parcels will be able to be reduced to seven-two-hundred square foot in size, it would be because of this little hash stuff back here. Lighting, the lighting is proposed by Duke Energy, and it conforms to the current UDO standards. The transportation plan for Garner, the two thousand eighteen Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not identify any recommendations for Clifford Road. However, the two thousand ten Garner Transportation Plan identified Clifford Road as a three-lane minor thoroughfare with curb and gutter and sidewalks. With the proposed improvements along the frontage of Clifford Road, this project, as proposed, may be found to be in conformity with the two thousand ten Garner Transportation Plan and the two thousand eighteen Garner Forward Transportation Plan. There were no recommendations from the Parks and Recs Department, so therefore this site may be found to be in conformance with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. After sufficient review and with the plans and revision, staff finds this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the UDO with certain specific conditions and they will follow. I think in your packet, there are some conditions, or two or three conditions were repeated, two or three times, so I'm gonna read you out all the conditions so you can get them, because the packet was a little error in there. Number one, prior to construction document approval, all off-site easements shall be acquired by the developer and shall be recorded by MAP and deed of easement. The easement shall be dedicated to the City of Raleigh entitled City of Raleigh Sanitary Sewer Easement. Two, prior to construction document approval, a sewer capacity study shall be submitted to the City of Raleigh. Three, prior to the final plat approval, construction documents must be approved by the City of Raleigh. Four, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, any required sewer pump station upgrades shall be completed and accepted by the City of Raleigh. And finally, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, any off-site sewer lines within the Oak Park subdivision necessary for trying, trying, tying the system must be accepted. necessary for trying, tying, tying the system must be accepted by the City of Raleigh. And I'm going to go back a few slides for you guys. Oops, sorry, went the wrong way. And this is where the Oak Park subdivision is. The number five condition that mentioned if they do need to tap into it, this is where the tap will be down, this area where my cursor is. Please refer to worksheet beginning on page 45 of your packet for the motion to approve or deny CUDZ 1805, and page 47 of your packet for the motion to approve or deny CUP SB 1803 Harper's Landing. And I'm here for the questions.
Questions?
Yes.
Does the sewer will drain to the Oak Park pump station?
That's only if they need to, one, the conditions that the developer needs to have a sewer capacity study done. This is a condition from City of Raleigh. If they deem that they need to, then they will get, come from that area.
What's the alternative?
I think the City of Raleigh Utilities may know that answer, I'm not sure.
Would you like the engineer, town engineer to come up and answer? Do you, so I see, do you have an answer?
I think pretty straightforward.
I don't have an answer to that.
Keith Roberts, 202 Bonnica Creek Drive. Just to make sure we're clear on the word capacity and what that, what that means. There's capacity, can do with the amount of capacity the town has to give to a project. This capacity that Raleigh is referring to, the downstream sewer analysis capacity requirement, making sure that downstream existing infrastructure can handle the additional loading from this project. There is no other alternative other than to go through Oak Park. It would go through Oak Park Phase 1, as you know, has been developed. Oak Park Phase 2, which is also on the Bethel Road, has proposed stubout sewer to New Bethel Road that would cross there at the creek to tie this project in.
But this, this is a formality because the, the 87 lots is not going to overload anything.
No, no, it, as a matter of fact, we've had extensive, extensive conversation with Raleigh about that entire basin out there, and what we all know is probably coming to that area. And in part of that, this project has hardly even been mentioned because most other projects like Oak Park and some of the other ones that may be coming are so much larger than this one that 87 lots is not going to make or break the existing pump station.
Thank you, Alvis. Appreciate the explanation.
Thank you, Keith.
Members of the public. I'll finish with her.
She got some more comments?
No, I'm just here for the.
Okay, we're through. You may say that.
Any members of the public wish to be heard on this.
Yeah, anybody in, in the audience.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm here for answering any questions, and developer is also here. You may have tried to address.
Mr. Mayor, I want to be heard and close this hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Do a call for a motion.
Move the town council accept staff statement regarding zoning consistency with comprehensive growth plan detailed in section 5 of this report as our own, and I therefore move further that the town council accept the recommendations that the planning commission under adopt ordinance number 2018-3926 approving zoning request number CUDZ 18-05. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, thank you. Next is the condition you're resigning to CUDZ 18-06, S.T. Woodin.
Need to have a vote on the condition you said, subdivision permit.
Yeah, on the condition you said, I motion on that.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in section 7 of this report as our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in section 3.1, 4.0 D, and therefore approve CUP SB 1803 Harper's Landing with the three standard conditions and the five site-specific conditions listed on the attached permit.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now with S.T. Woodin. David.
Mayor and members of the council, this is also a conditional use application, a reserving and a conditional use site plan, and the project name is S.T. Woodin. And the site is located on East Garner Road, just east of I-40. And the property is approximately 20.37 acres. And the planning commission did review this case at their August 13 meeting and did recommend approval. The project boundary is outlined in orange. I-40 is running directly to the west. The North Carolina Railroad is this 200-foot right-of-way that runs along south of East Garner Road and south of the project site and crosses I-40. East Garner Road runs along the northern boundary of this site, and the Martin Marietta Rock Quarry is located directly to the north. And to the southwest of this map is the White Oak Shopping Center with the Cabela's here in North Greenfield Parkway Business Park is located to the, to the southeast on the other side of the railroad. This is a picture of the project site looking east on East Garner Road. And the rock quarry is located on the left side of the picture. This map shows the zoning in this area. And the project boundary has split zoning. A portion is zone R-20, a portion is zone service business, and also a portion is zone I-2 heavy industrial. And the request is to rezone the entire boundary to industrial 2 conditional use. To the north, the rock quarry is zone I-2 heavy industrial. North Greenfield Business Park is zone I-2. We have service business zoning on the west side of I-40. So the predominant zoning in this area of Garner is commercial. This is a list of conditional use applications for this area of Garner. The oldest one in our database was from 1992, and the most recent one was from 2014. And this one was over by the intersection of East Garner Road and Jones Sausage Road on the southwest corner. Again, this site has split zoning between three different zoning districts. Approximately 15 acres is zone R-20, 4.12 acres is zone I-2, and 1.07 acres is zone service business. The requested zoning is, is industrial 2 conditional use District 205 with use conditions, and also, in the, in the proposed use shown on the site plan is, is a concrete asphalt plant. So this is a list of the use conditions for this project. The uses that are highlighted in yellow would be prohibited on the site. Uses that are not highlighted would be the permissible uses. And the permissible uses would include heavy, commercial, industrial, and uses with outdoor operations. This site is within the Garner Road Overlay District, and the overlay has a list of prohibited uses. And those are listed in the left column here, drive-in movie theaters, adult businesses, outdoor storage of goods not related to sale or use on the premise. Junkyards, automobile graveyards, commercial greenhouse operations. So those uses would be prohibited under the overlay district. The I-40 overlay does have some prohibited uses as well, and that would also apply to the site. And those are listed in the right column. And the proposed use asphalt concrete is not a prohibited use under one of those overlay districts. East Garner Road is a, is a NCDOT maintained facility, and the traffic counts for this road going back to 2007 are here. The most recent count was, was from 2015. And this road does lack curb gutter and sidewalks. And this is a typo here with Timber Drive East. This is the Garner Ford Long Range Plan. The area shown in the dark purple is designated as Heavy Industrial Center under Garner Ford. Light industrial centers are also designated in the area. And this would include Business Park on North Greenfield Parkway. The regional commerce centers on the, on the Garner Ford plan would be the areas around the White Oak Shopping Center near Highway 70 and White Oak Road. And there are no residential uses in this area here. The closest residential property that has a single-family home, I believe, is located on this site here. The proposed zoning request to industrial 2 conditional use with the use restrictions, it is consistent with the Garner Ford Comprehensive Growth Plan, which designates this area as a heavy industrial center. And the proposed zoning also is compatible with the zoning pattern and development pattern in this area of Garner, specifically east of I-40, along East Garner Road. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the proposed zoning. And Allison will give a presentation on the conditional use site plan.
I have a question, but it may be appropriate to wait for Allison's presentation having to do with the, the road there and the condition of the road and what putting heavy concrete trucks might do on that two-lane road out there.
I don't have any information on, on that question.
Well, I guess the question would be, does anybody have any concerns that if you put a concrete plant out there on a two-lane road that, I mean, I don't know what the specifications is. I, I'm sure it's built specifications to, to carry the, the load weight, but it seems to me, depending on how much traffic is generated by heavy concrete trucks, you might have a problem with the.
That same question was asked in the planning commission meeting. And I don't have any expertise in that, because my engineering stuff is degrees nice, isn't as, when it's worse. However, as a driver, that's my route to work every morning. And from what I've seen, a lot of those dump trucks are already going to the existing Martin Marietta site over here. They primarily come early in the morning time, because that's most time folks are dumping, pouring concrete in the morning time. I haven't noticed any difference, but I think that the developer may can give you some more factual information in my humble driver's experience.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can wait till we get to the site plan.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Let's open the public hearing. Go ahead.
So I'll be discussing the site plan review of this project. As David mentioned earlier, this particular project is for concrete and asphalt plant. They're going to be proposing two 56-by-14 Marshall trailers that will serve as offices. That's about 700 areas, four square feet in size. The Marshall trailer that will be near East Garner Road will have a decorative slash scored concrete masonry units on it, ivory in color. This is a requirement of the Garner Road Overlay Districts for them to have some type of decorative stone or masonry features on the building, because that's a part of it. However, the, the second trailer that's way on the rear side of the project is not required for that one. Landscaping buffer requirements. Tree cover will be met with a combination of existing trees and new trees, but the plan and maximum requirement of 12% is being met with the replacement plantings. And the buffers identified are street buffers. They're being met by adding a new plant material. And the primitive buffers, excuse me, vary in sizes between 25 feet and 45 feet depending on the uses. As we discussed earlier about the I-40 Overlay District, that requires a, a different width of buffer than it would be on the other sides of the property. Parking is based on one parking space for every 300 square feet. They're required to have six parking spaces, one accessible. Eight parking spaces are being proposed along with two accessible parking spaces. The fire and inspections department have reviewed the plan as proposed, and they have approved it. There is no FEMA floodplain areas on this site. Stormwater management, this project site is located along East Garner Road and is not located with any watershed protection area. This site is subject to water quality regulations for nitrogen as well as stormwater quantity regulations for detention of the 1, 10, and 25 year storms. There are two retention ponds that are being proposed as a stormwater control measures that will handle the stormwater quality and quantity requirements for this site. The stormwater control measure would treat, excuse me, would treat the reduced nitrogen below the allowable threshold of 10 pounds per acre per year for commercial development. It will also meet all the detention requirements as well. This development will also require to make a nitrogen offset payment to reduce the nitrogen loading rate down to 3.6 pounds per acre per year threshold. The infrastructure water and sewer. This project will be served by the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Water Infrastructure and On-Site Septic System. Again, a 16-inch water main is to the north of this project. North Carolina DOT has approved the proposed driveways, and there will be sidewalks located on East Garner Road as well in front of the project. And just to give you all some pictures while we're talking about this, this is one stormwater pond right here, and here is the other one as well. And right up here is where I was talking about the I-40 overlay buffer requirements that are over here as well. And the North Carolina Railroad right-of-way that David mentioned earlier in his presentation. Duke Energy is, has completed lighting plan for this project and is in conformance with the UDO. The site plan is in conformity with Garner Transportation Plan. East Garner Road is identified as a two-lane divided road with improvements identified along the frontage of East Garner Road, including additional pavement with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. This project may be found to be in conformity with the 2018 Garner Ford Transportation Plan. There are no recommendations for the park and recreation program, so this site may be found to be in conformance with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds this project as now proposed conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Council.
Counsel, have any questions, comments? Counsel, have any questions, comments?
There will be sidewalks in front of the property, but the sidewalk will not connect to an existing sidewalk as it's signed. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There's nothing that this beside, on either side, for them to connect to. But as future growth, the sidewalks will be, not going, can't speak for the future, but we will strongly encourage sidewalks to be a part of any plan that comes forward that will just to connect into what has been proposed today.
Very good. Anybody else?
I mean, I'll just, I think this gentleman was prepared to answer the question that I had, or maybe a follow-on question, but I don't have any more for...
If counsel has no further, we'll call for a motion.
Hold on.
Okay, go ahead.
I hate to slow down this train. My name is Toby Coleman. I'm an attorney for ST Wooton, 115 Beattyville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. Staff has done a great job of outlining why I choose appropriate for this property. In some ways, I think the maps that have already been shown further illustrate that point. This is an industrial area bordered by I-40 as well as the railroad. It's right across the street from the quarry. It's really, one of the reasons why ST Wooton chose this spot was because of its location. It will be making asphalt in large part from the aggregate that's coming from the quarry across the street, which goes a little bit to the traffic question. But we do have a few people here that can talk in more detail to some of these issues. Here with me tonight is Brian Garganis. He's with ST Wooton, and he can talk about some of the specifics of the project, how the asphalt, how the asphalt plant will work. Ronald Stevenson with Remy Kemp is a traffic engineer. He can speak to some of those specific questions that you had, Councilman Mashburn. And then we also have Mike Moore. He's an appraiser with Worthy and Watteau. He has done analysis of the impact of valuations on adjoining properties. And then we also have Jason Bertencino with Withers Ravenel. If there's any project-specific questions, any technical questions that the rest of us aren't smart enough to answer, Jason's the one to do that. So I'll hand it over to Brian.
Let's open the public hearing again. Bill, where are we?
We're going to have about five witnesses from the applicant, and then we'll see if anybody in the public wants to talk.
That looks like it.
Mayor, council members, good evening, and thank you for your time today. Again, I'm Brian Garganis, vice president with ST Wooton Corporation. We're a family-owned construction and materials business based out of Wilson, North Carolina. Again, as you've heard, we chose the site due to its proximity to the quarry. The bordering properties all fit well with what we intend to do here. The growth of the town of Garner and certainly Wake County as well make this an ideal location for us, and we look forward to doing business here, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I'll just go back and repeat mine. I'm an eastern North Carolina boy from many years ago. I grew up along a two-lane rural road, and my observation experience tells me that as you increase traffic, and particularly heavy truck traffic along the road, it has a tendency to tear up the pavement over time. And so my concern is not, I mean, ST Wooton's a good company. I'd love to see them build out there, but since that's a road, I guess the town of Garner doesn't control. We're dependent on NCDOT or somebody to keep that road in good shape. As she mentioned, I think there's a fair amount of traffic, commercial, excuse me, traffic of people coming in to Garner from that area out there. I don't know how many trucks, you know, are using it now from Martin Marietta, but I'm sure as your, as your company gets geared up, there'll be more truck traffic there. I guess I was just interested to know if there's any proposal to do anything to keep the road in, or to upgrade the road to keep the heavy truck traffic from making that a big problem.
Now, we have a traffic engineer that will certainly speak to that, but would you like to come up?
Sorry, not to the right person yet.
You all do is you go to the booth, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ronald Stevenson with Remy Kemp and Associates, 5808 Farrington Place in Raleigh. And I'll just tell you briefly who I am and what we've done, and then I'll address those questions. So we've helped the applicant with doing a traffic study, and albeit a brief one. It's not a full-blown TIA that could be required. But we did address the traffic. We met with NCDOT to coordinate the driveways and what we were planning to do here, and we prepared a brief traffic study to address or look at the traffic impacts. The question about the trucks on East Garner Road, this section of East Garner Road, you saw the traffic number earlier was 50, I think it was 5,500 cars a day, which is not approaching the capacity of that road. It's probably about half the capacity of that road, and so there's plenty of room there for, to move trucks and even more cars up and down the road. There are trucks already using the roadway, and so it's not really out of character. The additional trucks from this particular facility will not really be out of character for that particular roadway. NCDOT has been out to the site to look at the driveways and check site distance and that kind of thing, so they have seen it. It's their roadway, and if they had any real concerns with it, they would normally make that requirement as part of the driveway permit, but they have looked at the driveways and been out there and approved the driveway locations. I don't know if that answers the question.
Well, yeah, it sort of does, but I guess nobody can tell how much the heavy traffic will require of future repayment or whatever. Hopefully, NCDOT will keep up with that and keep the road in good shape.
Yeah, the two-lane roads, the pavement structure is sufficient typically to handle certainly this amount of traffic that would be on it. The number of trucks on the roadway in a day is not, is not a significant number, so the pavement that's there with the traffic that's on it would be, should be sufficient to handle that, which is why I think NCDOT didn't look at that, you know, even closer.
I'll accept that. Thank you.
Kathy?
I just have a question about, have there been any considerations made regarding traffic coming into and out of East Garner Magnet Middle School in the morning and the afternoon? There are presently some problems with that on Jones Sausage Road, but have you, has that been figured into your plan or your analysis?
I may let Brian or somebody speak about the specific hours, you know, of the operation. I can't say that this site does have a couple of ways. It's convenient in either direction. We could go to the east or go to the west and still get to major roadways. So I think it's pretty convenient in those times where school traffic's pretty heavy. I think there's other ways to go. And that school traffic is usually heavy for about 30 minutes in the morning, and then again, 30 minutes in the middle of the afternoon. But usually the morning's worse because it coincides with the rush hour of other folks. But I think they have multiple ways to go, and if there's any specific questions about time of day and that kind of thing, I think maybe Brian could answer that if we need to.
Do buses access the school from, from East Garner Road, or do they access it from Jones Sausage?
That's a good question.
I'm thinking access it from Jones Sausage.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Buses use the same entrance as the carpool lane on Jones Sausage.
I know they do typically try to split the buses and the vehicles.
Would either you or Mr. Garganis have any idea how long Martin Marietta has been quarrying there?
I do not. I do not.
At East Garner Middle School, they were quarried there because the dynamite would blow up, and we could fill in the glass, so it's been over 40 years. Plus, we must remember, I mean, I choose go out there, these trucks are on this road every day. There are heavy trucks on this road every day. This is old Highway 70. This is an old road bed that's been there for a long, long, long time. There's a lot of truck traffic on it. So this is a, you know, these trucks go, come up on Garner Road to go down Jones Sausage Road. So if we question, you know, Garner Road, do you question Jones Sausage or any other road also because the truck traffic, as far as exiting the site, they can get on Garner Road, you can go east and go down to Auburn Knightdale Road and get on 70 that way. Much easier than going like snaking around and going through Jones Sausage on the S-curve through the railroad track north of that stoplight, well, multiple stoplights actually, so that's one way to go. So there are multiple ways to exit it. This road bed has been traveled for decades by heavy traffic, heavy trucks. And, I mean, I was there when I was in East Garner Middle School, junior high at the time, so that's been a long, long time. So DOT wouldn't have easily approved this if they couldn't do that, the heavy traffic that's going to be on there.
One other question of curiosity. I think when Mr. Hopkins was a guest the other night, somewhere along the line, they mentioned how the trucks would access Interstate 40 off of the old Garner Road or East Garner Road bridges, and new ramps would be put in. Would you, could you just enlighten us just a little bit, and then I've got one final comment.
For those of you who don't know, ST Wooton has also been awarded a project to widen I-40 from I-440 down through Johnson County. So yes, for approximately a year, the East Garner Road Bridge will be closed while a new one is constructed beside it. Okay? So while that's going on, we would utilize the existing bridge and possibly on into the future while we're building the project. We intend to build a ramp off of the existing bridge down to the median of I-40, so we'll be reducing truck traffic that will be flowing around through the area.
Well, I reckon there's two comments. Well, congratulations on getting the bid. For those of, the rest of you in the audience, it's kind of a minor project, just a little over $300 million that they're talking about. Perhaps when the attorney read the preconditions about, did you come in here with your mind made up? When I saw the plans, I only thought one thing. Finally, this site has found its calling in life.
Yes, because this site accumulated a lot of stuff on it over the years, and our attorney worked diligently to get it cleaned up several years ago, and did a great job doing it. So yes, Mr. Kennedy, I think you're right. It backs up to the interstate, it backs up to a railroad just across from the quarry. They're not going to put multi-family housing there, I don't think. I think this is more appropriate industrial use.
I can't imagine a more, what do you call it, a symbiotic relationship with you and Martin Marietta, so it's nice they still own the land, and I'm glad they're willing to sell you the product, so that's...
Yeah, so are we.
I'm sure you all are as well. I don't have any further comments or questions.
Anybody in the audience?
If we could, we have one more witness, and I'd probably be quick and say it's our appraiser. We just want to make sure we touch all the bases for the conditional use purposes. With that, we do have one exhibit. It's appraisal letter.
My name is Michael Moore. I'm with Worthy and Watteau, address 3506 Eden Croft Drive, Raleigh. I'm a state-certified appraiser, 20 years' experience. I'm familiar with the neighborhood, have been out there, and the letter I have been composed and being distributed now basically reiterates the idea that it is, in my opinion, that development of concrete and asphalt plant as proposed will not injure or impair values of the adjacent or budding properties on the site. Any other questions you might have for me, I'm glad to address them.
Anyone have anything? Go ahead. Somebody wanted to go.
Evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Kathy Deely. I'm with the North Carolina Railroad Company. I'm at 2809 Highwoods Boulevard in Raleigh, North Carolina, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I'll be brief. The North Carolina Railroad Company does have just a couple comments and a request. First of all, we want to thank the petitioner that they did recognize the rail corridor, and it is pretty unique in this area. It's actually a little bit wider than 200 feet because of the project in 1984. We actually relocated the tracks, purchased some property on the south, and hence our rail corridor is a little bit wider next to 40. That's just a little bit of history for you. But we did note that in the site plan that there's a good buffer, approximately 25 feet along the rail corridor, and that's along also the overlapped area, so we appreciate that. And the only thing that we would like to request is that if the petitioner does enter into the area that is the rail corridor, or the, like I said, or the area that's identified as overlap for any purpose, and I think on one page they had a little removal of concrete on page two of the site plan, if they could approach us directly, and we will work with them for an agreement to do so. The bigger thing is in reviewing the storm containment management system, it's the one that's, and I don't know how to do this, but the one that's to the south or the smaller storm containment management system in that location. We did have a couple questions, and I'm sure that we can work them out, but they are more like, we'd like to see where the water is ultimately flowing because looking at the plan sheets, it wasn't 100% sure, and what we try to ensure is that the drainage system does not put any additional water towards the rail corridor for any erosion that might be, might take place as an effect of that. And we would love to see the details and reference to that, so we are requesting that a conditional approval be in place, allowing us to actually maybe review and approve any of those hydrology questions that we do have, and we would be happy to work with Martin Marietta and ST Wooton and the town to accomplish that as quickly as possible. So that was my only...
How long as quickly as possible?
Well, give it to me. We have in-house engineers, so in addition to me reviewing the plans, which I've done, any of that information, it will be provided to them, and they're local, so for instance, usually within a week, they can review and respond in reference to any plans or any things that are submitted to us. Our intention is not to hold up any development. It's just to ensure that we kind of know what's happening with that water when it leaves that area. If need be, we interface with Norfolk Southern Railway Company, the operating railroad, for any review of plans too, but this could be something simple that we can just review at in-house and not go, not go to them as well. But that, that process is usually very speedy.
Now, can she work with staff to try to incorporate some of her remarks?
I would hope the applicant has someone here, engineer, that maybe can answer the questions about the stormwater drainage and where that might go to, and then provide some documentation.
That would be great, and I'll be glad. Our engineer is in Charlotte tomorrow, but if I can have the information come Friday, I'd be glad to present that all to him for his expertise as well as my review.
Good evening. Jason Bertencino, Withers Ravenel, 115 McKinnon Drive, Cary, North Carolina. Relative to the drainage, obviously, the town of Garner has very stringent standards in number of storm events and whatnot that they maintain. That stormwater management structure is a very small portion of the site, and in fact, not proposed as part of the initial phases of construction. We have no issue sitting down with North Carolina Railroad and looking at the issue. We certainly don't want to create any legal situations for ourselves. We just ask that that's not a condition of development because that sort of creates the golden hammer of veto power, so to speak, so we're happy to sit down with them and review everything and make sure we're compliant with all the... with all drainage laws. It's not an issue.
Thank you.
Satisfactory, just for you to meet with them? For a matter like this, we can't change the direction of the water?
No, no. What happens is I'm just trying to make sure there's not more water, or it's not going, there's not more going towards the tracks, that's all. And so we looked preliminary at the, we look at the topography and where the water was going. And that, and like I said, that was the only question that we were, we would like to have answered, and I'm sure we can sit down. Like you said, I don't want to hold it up, but yet I would love an opportunity to interface, that's all.
Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Burton Cino may have the plans, and maybe we could go sit down in the room next door and answer your questions about that now? Just tell them where the water's going?
Seems like that's what she's asking.
Again, from that perspective, I mean, I don't want to, again, the town of Garner has peak rates runoff controls that are going to be all complied with. We have not looked specifically at any specific railroad culverts. Again, we do not anticipate any issues in the area because of the requirements that are there, but we're, again, we're happy to sit down and review it at any form need be. I was at your office not too awful long ago. We can do that again. So it's not a problem. We know where you live and happy to do that.
I think that's satisfactory.
This gentleman in the back. Did you wish to speak?
Hello, I'm John Richter, 146 Rome Drive in Garner. I was raised in South Texas, and we had some irrigated land down in the southern tip of Texas for irrigation water from the Rio Grande River. And what we've learned is that whenever you use a lot of water, it flows downhill. So that's one of the things that I'm glad the railroad is concerned about. But I heard that there is a 16-inch water main feeding this project, and I know concrete plants use a lot of water, and I'm glad that they feel that that's sufficient. What I missed in the presentation, and maybe I just, you know, dozed off for a minute, I didn't hear anything about sewer. I didn't hear, is there going to be a sewer connection?
It was stated in the presentation.
Okay. There is a sewer connection?
No. It's on-site sewer.
It's on-site sewer, so it uses septic system. Okay. Now, has the petitioner, and again, I think this is wonderful, considering all the plans that we've looked at, we're going to need the concrete, we're going to need the asphalt. We want to give business to local people like Martin Marietta. I think this is a good project. But what is going to be connected to the sewer system? You not only have water going in to make the concrete, but there is more water used, if I understand it right, in a concrete plant, cleaning out the trucks so that the concrete doesn't set up at the end of the day. Cleaning, you know, filling the trucks so that they have water to clean their slides with when they go out to site and everything. Where is this water going? Is it all going to this local site treatment? You know, I just had some questions, because if you end up with piles of things and you end up with concrete tailings that are washed out of trucks and they build up on the site, that affects the stormwater runoff quality. And I've seen some concrete sites that were pretty miserable after they've been used for 20 or 30 years. Now, I don't want to say anything against this project. We need the project, we need the service. I can't think of a better developer to put it together. But I just don't understand what, how all of the water is going to be treated that's being used to clean off the trucks and being used for other things on the site other than just making the concrete. Does the petitioner have anybody to speak to that issue? Thank you.
As many of you know, we already have an existing ready-made concrete plant just down the road, right on the other side of I-40. So we already have this issue at all concrete plants, so we address it at every site. So we do have water retention systems where the water's cleaned and the material is basically recycled. We get the rocks out of the water, and any of the tailings that he describes, we certainly have those. We crush them up and we recycle them. We're a huge recycling industry, especially on the asphalt side. We like to crush up and reuse our natural resources. So that's what we plan to do with it. Water? The water, again, yes. The water will flow through a tiered retention system where it deposits itself, right? So it'll deposit itself, it'll clean out those basins, put them in our pile of our recycled materials.
And then the water with the line?
It is.
Goes into the ground?
It'll go into the basins and.
Or goes into the stormwater system?
It'll go into, it'll go into the drainage system that is designed, okay? And we comply with all water quality. We're tested, we test the water that runs off our property. We're in compliance with all air and water quality.
Then what else? Are you not going to leave here and say they didn't let me speak, or are they? And where did that leave Mr. Attorney?
Close the hearing and see if there's a motion.
Close the hearing. I need a motion.
I move the town council to accept staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the comprehensive growth plan detailed in section five of this report as our own, and I therefore move further that the town council accept the recommendations of the planning commission and adopt ordinance number 20183927 approving the rezoning request number CUDZ 1806.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed. Conditional use of rezoning CUDZ 1807, Oak City Academy.
We need a motion on the.
We need a motion on the. We need a motion on the site plan. I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in section seven of this report as a loan, and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria section 3.14. D, and therefore approve CUP-SP-18-12. S.T. Wooton moved to three standard conditions and no site-specific conditions listed on the attached permit.
Very good. Well, have a motion. Have a second. Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed. We're calling for a 10-minute recess. Get out and mingle.
Bathroom. The Baptist Church. The planning commission did review this request at a meeting on August the 13th and did recommend approval. The project boundary is outlined in orange. And the church, main campus, and the sanctuary, that is located to the south. But the entire site is owned by the church. Highway 70 is located along the south here. We have an old street over to the west, and then Old Mechanical on the backside. And then Hayman Road is over to the east, and that connects down into Highway 70. This is a picture of the project site, and the, this is, this project is not new construction. It is going, it is a change of use of this building here. So there's not going to be anything new really constructed on the site. It's just, this will be a change of use from church assembly over to a school. And this is a zoning map of this area, and schools are not a permissible use in service business. However, churches are. So that is the reason for the zoning, or the need for the zoning change. The predominant zoning in this area is service business and community retail. The church sanctuary site is zone office institutional. We do have some light industrial to the north of Old Mechanical Court, and we do have community retail zoning along Highway 70. This is a list of conditional use zoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest case we have on file was from 1994, and the most recent case was from 2017. And that was along Lupra and Highway 70. That was when the Walgreens was rezoned and developed. Existing zoning is heavy commercial service business. This is a conditional use district. It's conditional use district 121, and there are service business conditions on the site now. The requested zoning classification is office institutional, conditional use district 206. There are some use conditions that are proposed, and the proposed use for this project is a private school. This is a list of the zoning conditions, the uses that are highlighted in yellow, condominiums and cemeteries, those would be prohibited on the site. All other O-N-I uses would be permissible. So this request is very close to a general use O-N-I district with the exception two uses would be prohibited. Old Mechanical Court is maintained by NC DOT. It has a 60-foot right-of-way, and this road lacks curbing gutter and sidewalks. There are no traffic counts available for this section of Mechanical Court. On Mechanical Boulevard, which is on the other side or to the west, that has traffic counts around 700 trips per day according to the 2015 DOT traffic counts. This map shows the Garner Ford recommendations for this area of Garner, and the recommendations do show civic and institutional uses on this site. And when we went through the plan recommendations during the draft, this site was owned by the church, and so the plan did take that into account, that that would continue to be a civic or institutional use and not a commercial or industrial use. Garner Ford does recommend corridor commercial to the properties to the west. Also, some properties along the, that has frontage along the southern, on the south side of Highway 70. This zoning change request from service business to office and institutional conditional use is consistent with the Garner Ford recommendations for this site, which is civic and institutional. And the zoning is compatible with the surrounding land use and zoning in this area. The predominant land use is commercial and non-residential, so this request is in line with the recommendations of Garner Ford. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the zoning change. Stacy will give a presentation on the conditional use permit.
Anybody from the applicant wish to be heard on the zoning? Anybody from the public?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Danny Breed, 5029 Ghlin Creek Trail, Garden, North Carolina. I'm the headmaster, co-founder of Oak City Academy. I'm just here for questions, if you have any.
How many, well, how many students, did I see that somewhere you expect to?
Eighty-five.
How many?
Eighty-five.
Okay. That was probably in there. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the door here. Close the door here. I guess we're to the two motions we need.
You have testimony on the site plan, ma'am.
Okay, let them go. Anybody wish, anybody wish to address the council? Go forward.
I'm here to talk about the site plan conformity part of the presentation tonight. Again, this is for a school, public or private, as Mr. Breed just says. The building that is currently there is 5,341 square feet, and they are looking to lease that building, as Tim explained earlier. The landscape requirements are all being met except for one parking island that was not installed per the previously approved plan. That island has, as I understand it from Mr. Breed, has been installed today, and the tree will be up in the next couple of days, soon as he can get it planted. But other than that, all the existing landscaping on the site was from when the church site was approved. So there's no additional landscaping that's being installed other than the one parking island that's needed. They do have 12 parking spaces required based on the three parking spaces for each elementary classroom, plus two spaces for the office. And then they do have a daycare component, so that parking requirement is one space for employee and one for every eight children. So again, they're required 12, and within the leased area, they have 34 parking spaces. Inspections, together with the fire department, has taken a look at the site plan and preliminary approved that. There's no FEMA floodplain areas on the site. And there was a grass swell and dry detention pond built as part of the church site in 2008, and it satisfied the requirements for this project as well. There's a very slight increase in impervious, and I'll show you that, that was also covered under the nitrogen payment in 2008. There was a slight overpayment, so there's no further payment that's required for this small increase in impervious. Again, it's already connected to public water and sewer, and there's no changes planned to the roadways or public sidewalks there. This is the site plan that exists. The blue little sidewalk is what it is. At the southern portion of the site plan that you see there was an additional requirement for some ADA accessibility issues under the building code. So that is the increase in impervious. The green semicircle that you see there is where the island that was not installed originally is located, and that is being installed. And this just shows the traffic pattern for drop-offs and pickups coming off of Old Mechanical Court there. So we asked them to provide that as part of their site plan. And then the building is, of course, in the orange color. There's no changes being made to the lighting as it currently exists as part of the church plan. There's no improvements planned for Old Mechanical Court, and the site plan is in conformity with both the 2010 and 2018 transportation plans. There was no recommendations for the site from Parks and Rec, Open Space, and Greenways Plan, so therefore can be found in conformance. And after sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project is now proposed conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Act. The planning commission did confirm staff's findings that the plan was in conformity with adopted town plans and policies, and further accepted staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the comprehensive growth plan as their own and recommended approval. So the worksheet, beginning on page 88, is for the motion to approve or deny CUDZ 1807, and then on page 90 for your packet for a motion to approve or deny CUP SP 1813, Oak City Academy. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. And again, Mr. Breed is here as well.
Anybody have anything?
zoning consistency with the Comprehensive Growth Plan as their own and recommended approval. So the worksheet, beginning on page 88, is for the motion to approve or deny CUDZ 1807, and then on page 90 for your packet for a motion to approve or deny CUP SP 1813, Oak City Academy. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and again, Mr. Breed is here as well.
Anybody have anything? Y'all ready to vote on a motion?
Anybody from the public or from the applicant wish to be heard?
Pardon me?
If I ask if anyone from the public or the applicant wish to be heard?
Yes, we've got someone to come in.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pam Porter, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. I'm the landscape architect on the project. I'll be brief because I know it's late, so if you have any questions on the plans, I would be happy to answer them, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we're closing the public here and ready for motion? Yeah, I'll do that. I'll close the public hearing. All right.
Okay, regarding rezoning, motion, I move that the town council accept staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Comprehensive Growth Plan detailed in Section 5 of this report as our own, and I therefore move further that the town council accept the recommendations of Planning Commission Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-3928 approving rezoning request under CUDZ 1807.
Motion made in second, all in favor, vote by Senate. All opposed.
I move that the council accept staff's record statements regarding, for the conditional use permit regarding planning consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14.D., and therefore approve CUP SP 18-13, Oak City Academy, with three standard conditions and no site-specific conditions listed on the attached permit.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor, vote by Senate. All opposed.
Welcome to Garner.
Happy to be here.
Okay, next we've got a UDO text amendment, 1801. Jeff Treedenberg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm not going to go into very much detail on this one. This is coming back to you now for the second time for a final decision. Basically, just what has transpired since you last saw this text amendment is that it went to the Planning Commission for their review and approval. There again, there were no negative comments or anything from the public. Everything was positive, and the Planning Commission agreed to unanimously support the text amendment. Again, just to recap, this is being sponsored by the downtown organization from Mari's office, and what this text amendment would do is allow for both outdoor entertainment as well as indoor manufacturing in the central business district. The outdoor entertainment uses, if they were to be proposed in the future, would come to you as a special use permit approval, and the indoor manufacturing is restricted only to those areas that are not directly on Main Street in that two-block, two-to-three block corridor, and those would be permitted at a staff level, assuming that they meet the extra conditions that are in the ordinance. If you do have any remaining questions, though, I'll be glad to answer those. If not...
Had them last time, I still had a story confused by this. It says manufacturing production usage should not be permitted on Main Street, existing building. Okay, we had a sign shop there for many, many years, a printing shop that's not there. Would that or would that not be permitted? They're manufacturing something, or they're producing something according to this language?
That's a good question.
I think we got a business now that produces signs and so forth. I'm just sitting here thinking.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
We had, we had one, and then we still have one. We had one that moved, and we have another one that's producing both.
David reminded me that because there's a retail component to it, that's how it's been classified in the past, so they are looking, they are looking to expand that particular business and to have more of a manufacturing production area. What they do in-house is kind of complementary to, to the retail component and the office component that they have, so that's how that's been classified. But otherwise, if they were just doing the manufacturing, then yes.
So that's the question I remember at the public hearing. I said, if a microbrewery want to come down there, you said y'all would have to meet the criteria of staff of how much retail they, how much they produce and how much they sold as retail.
Currently, that's how we, how we make that distinction on, on microbrewers.
So what is?
Is that in language somewhere? I'm just curious.
That, that has been, that has been an interpretation that has been arrived at, and we've kind of established a pattern of precedence on that one.
Trying to figure out because I get other towns, you know, go in and on their Main Street district, they have these, I'll use microbrewers as an example.
Right.
So that's why I asked that question last time. It sounded like, is that something that you want to have down there, but you may, you may not allow it, so.
Yeah. And we had that, when Mari and I met early on, we had that exact discussion as to how we would classify those and whether we needed to go ahead and add microbrewers as a separate new use category. We decided we didn't want to take that leap yet, and she felt pretty comfortable that most folks that she had that were interested, if they were going to be on the Main Street location, that they would have an ample retail onsite consumption, more retail.
And Jeff, I guess you're trying to, with this, trying to limit any business that might have adverse effect on neighboring businesses or that could kind of change the character of the central business district as it stands now? Is that?
Anything that would push it more from that retail to the, the manufacturing end of it that doesn't bring in the clientele as much, so not keeping it more on the retail side as opposed to employment.
Maybe you can still help us out. We've got the technical parts, and I see the, the charts and that sort of thing. So what's DGA's intent here? When you put the word athletic or entertainment facility, maybe that's required wording in the UDO, but what's, what's there in layman's language? What are they trying to accomplish?
What they're, what they're just trying to accomplish is to have small spaces for outdoor events, which is something that they currently can't do under the way the uses are spelled out today. So if there is a small space and somebody wants to use it for an outdoor event, whether it's a small reception or a small music performance or anything like that, they can't do it according to the current zoning. So the idea is, is that they want to be able to allow those kind of events. That gets categorized based on how things are broken down now, and outdoor athletic and entertainment is all lumped together.
I was wondering what kind of athletic activity you could have there, so that it just happens to be the, the broad brush coverage of athletic or entertainment, that you're focused on entertainment?
Right. Given the size of the parcels down there, I think the most you could probably do would be like to have a cornhole tournament, but that'd be about it.
About all you can do down there. That's our ping pong court.
Move to approve UDO text amendment 1801.
Motion made, take it all in favor, vote by Senate.
Aye. Aye. Thankfully.
One and two, Jeff, they're just house cleaning, right? Those two on the, number one, you just, he's got, that's a house cleaning. If you look some more, you're gonna find some more, I imagine. Keep looking. Thank you, David.
Mayor, members of council, this is a housekeeping item where we are trying to correct an error that was made during last year's ETJ expansion. There was one little piece of land that was missed in our mapping program that did not get picked up when properties were rezoned, and so the site did go up for sale, and so we started getting inquiries as to what the zoning is. And when we went in and checked and did our research, we determined that, that the property was not zoned, that it was missed, so that's the purpose of this request. This is a housekeeping item. The applicant is the Town of Garner Planning Department. The site is located at 3,008 Highway 70 East. The site is just over an acre in size. The public hearing was held on July the 17th. The Planning Commission did recommend approval at their August 13th meeting. And this is a, a map of where the site is. It's a triangle-shaped piece. It's located directly east of the auto salvage yard, which is located near Highway 70 and Guy Road. The Johnson County boundary or line is, is here on the map. When the properties in this area were brought into our ETJ last year, they were zoned. The, the properties along the south side of Highway 70 East of Guy Road were zoned from Wake County Highway District to Town of Garner Service Business, and that was our intent last year, but the site did get missed. So the town, the planning department is, is requesting that the site be zoned service This is a list of zoning cases in this area. The most recent one was last year, Z 1701, the Town of Garner ETJ expansion, which also included a rezoning of all of those tracks. The zoning that it did have under Wake County was Highway District, which allowed a wide range of uses from single-family to heavy commercial and industrial, allowed as a special use permit. So it was a district that allowed just about everything. The requested zoning is service business, which is a heavy commercial zoning, which does allow outdoor uses and outdoor retail. There are uses within the service business district that are restricted. Bars and nightclubs are restricted within 500 feet of residential zoning. Adult businesses are prohibited within 1,000 feet of residential zoning. Extended state facilities are prohibited within 500 feet of residential zoning, and the site is within 500 feet of residential zoning. Also restricted are outdoor kennels and veterinarian uses. Car washes are also prohibited within 500 feet of residential zoning, as well as vehicle towing and storage. So going back to this map, we have R40, which is residential zoning, so those uses would not be permitted on the site because of its proximity to R40 zoning. The site is also within the highway overlay district for US 7401, and under this overlay, there are several prohibited uses, and those include drive-in movie theaters, adult businesses, outdoor storage of goods not related to sale or use on the premise, scrap yards, salvage yards, junkyards, mining, quarrying operations, concrete mixing plants, reclamation landfills, commercial greenhouse operations, solar farms, and recyclable material collection centers. So these uses are prohibited. The uses on the previous slides are prohibited within a certain distance of residential The site does have access to water. There is a 16-inch water line that runs down Highway 70 from Johnson County over towards Rayner Road and Arbor Nightdale Road. This is a 16-inch water line. The site does not have access to public sewer, so any development of the site would require a private septic system. Highway 70, the site has approximately 475 feet of road furniture on Highway 70, and 70 is maintained by NCDOT, and 70 does have a right-of-way width of 200 feet, and the most current traffic counts available for this area are around 29,000 vehicles per day. No additional traffic impacts are anticipated as a result of this zoning change. The site is only an acre in size. We've had some inquiries on auto sales lots and things of that nature, so we don't anticipate any significant traffic impacts as a result of this zoning change because the site is so small. The site does not have any FEMA floodplain. The Garner Ford plan that was adopted does include this piece as part of the corridor commercial designation, so the service business zoning would fit in within that, within the recommendations of Garner Ford. The property, the property directly to the east is owned by NC State in this area, and NC State also owns some land on the Johnson County side, so there are no residential uses that directly abut or, or directly in this vicinity. In summary, this request to service business is compatible with the Garner Ford plan. It's, it's compatible with the current zoning pattern in the area now. A lot of those tracks were zoned service business last year, east of Guy Road on the south side of 70, and that's because those had existing uses on them. The tracks, the properties on the north side of 70 were zoned, R40 as a holding zone until they developed, since there were no active uses on those sites. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer questions regarding this case. Yes, sir.
Have there ever been a building on this property?
Yes, sir, there has.
No clue.
It, it burned down, and it has been vacant, and it was brought into our ETJ last year. So the owners, their intent is to sell the land, so the site, that particular use that was on the site is prohibited in the 70 overlay district.
Thank you.
Site is large enough to support a septic tank, if that's...
I don't have any information on that, so if anybody, there, there was a septic tank on the site. I think there's some question as to the status, if it's still functioning, so...
No, I wouldn't doubt that it would have to be looked into, but it's over an acre in size, so it's more than 30,000 square feet, so this should be, this should be able to find a way to sewer it. I wouldn't, I don't think anybody's trying to mislead anybody, but I'm really just trying to confirm that even though we rezonate and sewer is not available, it can be developed except unless somebody needs tremendous amount of water.
So anybody who develops a site would have to get their septic permit through Wake County?
But they would have to come into, to the city to get the water?
Yes, if they connected to water, which, which were involved boring under Highway 70, we have talked to the city of Raleigh, and, and they would not require the water connection for a site that small, so it is possible that could be on well and septic.
Yeah, they could get the distance between a well and a septic tank.
We give an ill motion to adopt ordinance 2018-3930.
I move that the town council accept states staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Comprehensive Growth Plan detailed in Section 4 of this report as our own, and I therefore move further that the town council accept the recommendations that the Planning Commission adopt ordinance number 2018-3930 approving rezoning request number Z 18-03.
Motion made, take it all in favor, vote by Senate. All opposed. Has there been a public horse committee meeting?
Yes, sir.
Got anything to report?
Yes, sir. Just have to get back to my notes. Just have to get back to my notes. I'll be there in a week or so. Yes, the Public Works Committee met on the 29th of August. One subject was stormwater needs. This was reported that there's three particular sites that need some near-term improvements or replacements or upgrading. And you'll likely be getting a request at a subsequent council meeting for an authorization to issue an RFP and to go ahead with the design of those improvements. But that was one of the things that we concluded. Number two, we'll have additional public works meetings addressing CIP and water and sewer allocation policy. And while I'm at it, the MOU meeting with Garner Fire and Rescue is moving along. The next meeting is anticipated in the latter part of this month.
To follow, Mr. Kennedy stated throughout the stormwater, the three, actually the three stormwater replacements and also of working at Project King and Cloverdale, these were brought about by the study that we authorized last year to go and look at the stormwater lines that were greater than 24 inches. And there were three that need attention pretty quick. So that's why that information will be coming for you, forward to you in the next couple of meetings.
Mr. Manager.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have your Garner info in front of you, so if there's any questions about that. And we want to give you an update on the tractor-trailer situation at the 9th Grade Center on Wake County School Systems Property. We tagged a dozen trucks slash trailers last week, and as of today, all of those have been removed. However, an additional five were tagged today. So as those were removed, some others moved in and parked there. One vehicle that was tagged last week will be towed Thursday if it has not been removed by then. Wake County Public School System agreed to put up additional signs. However, they have not been installed yet. And so we have sent the letter asking them to install those signs and patrol the lot and enforce the parking. So staff has moved on trying to get that lot cleared of the trucks parking there. I'm gonna call on Matt. We gave you an overview of the Greenway, South Garner Greenway, last week. And there are some opportunities to apply for some funding. So Matt's gonna give you an overview, Mr. Rollance, on how that might work and the timetable for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a real quick update. That's when we left the last meeting, that's something that we said we would continue to explore further, particularly in light of the prices coming in so much higher than I think we all probably thought when we started on the project. And we're still looking at all the potential options, but one of them has a shorter timeframe. And so just wanted to give you a quick update about how we're gonna proceed with that. But I'm looking for, you know, feedback from you all if you don't feel comfortable with us moving in that direction. In the, Mr. Hodges and the planning staff were reviewing the transportation-related projects that we might submit for LAP funding. And in the process of that, we were discussing the idea of submitting the Greenway for that funding category as well through Campo. One of the concerns we've had in the past was that it would potentially compete with the other projects. And we didn't necessarily want to be, we're already competing with other jurisdictions, and we didn't want to be competing with ourselves as well. But that is, bike and pedestrian projects are in a separate category, and so they have their own funding. And we could submit a project in that category without impacting anything else that we might be applying for. And we don't currently have plans to submit anything else in the bike or pedestrian category. So we think it's an option that's at least worth pursuing. We, at the moment, are moving towards a Monday deadline where we have to submit a pre-submit, a pre-submittal package, basically just holding our place in line and indicating that we think we're gonna have a full submission that would come later. So if you all are comfortable with that, we would like to go ahead and complete the pre-submittal, kind of hold our place in line, have some conversation with the Campo staff. And then between September 10th, when we do that, and the end of October, when the complete submission is due, come back to you all for further discussion about, you know, what sort of match would be required? What are we comfortable committing to? And seeing if we do, in fact, want to proceed with the full submission. But since it's a tighter timeframe than we anticipated when we last talked at the work session, just wanted to make sure that that was okay with you all, that we explore that possibility and keep moving in that direction and bring some more details back to you after the pre-submittal phase.
Do, well, I'm in favor of it. Do we know what range of potential funding is maybe available? Is there, like, is there a floor and a ceiling on what the ranges they have in these type projects?
There's a, we have to provide at least a 20% match. So the, there may be a ceiling for the maximum cost of a project that you could submit, but I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but it would be quite high. So I think that we probably could submit. Do you, I don't know, Jeff, you, I know Mr. Trezenberg has some experience with these projects. I don't know if there is a maximum submittal amount, dollar amount.
I think it's only capped by the amount that's allocated percentage-wise to that particular program. I've seen some that are well into the millions of dollars that get funded, so it's, it just kind of depends. But they try to spread it around, but again, if one scores well, I don't know that there's any individual cap.
The Campo's got money now. They're gonna lose it somewhere. The way I understand it, they're moving it into, essentially, an account.
Mr. Rollance mentioned there's a 20% cap required, but we tend to score better if we put up more town funds. And so there might be opportunity to go anywhere from 20% on up to 50, depending on what we think our best chances of getting funding.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we would bring back to you all. They do have rough amounts that they have allocated to each of the categories. And so it looks like in this year's funding round, they would have about $6 million in the bike pedestrian project. So, I mean, you could make some assumptions about if, you know, if that were your money and how you might distribute it, but there's, that, that and the 20%, at least a 20% match, but we might want to do more to up our chances would be the, sort of the governing factors about how we might craft the submittal.
Therefore, question.
We're not required to make a pre-selection of alternates A, B, or C, are we?
Yeah, that's a good question. We believe that we can submit it with all three of those options, you know, with the exact route to be determined, so that we don't have to presuppose the outcome of the public, you know, community input processing, bring that back to council. That's one of the questions that we'll be able to ask during the pre-submittal process to get clarification on that. But our preliminary understanding is that we can submit it with the general idea of making a connection in this vicinity with these three route options. And that would not, we would not be prohibited from submitting a project like that.
How soon would we hear something from the pre-submittal?
We have a meeting with Campo staff tentatively scheduled for September 13th. So I think we would, what's that? No, I'm sorry, 19th, September 19th, I apologize. And I would think at that meeting, we would get some feedback about what our options are. October 31st is the deadline to submit. So anything that doesn't get resolved in that meeting on September 19th, we could follow up with the Campo staff to try to figure out between now and then. And like I said, we would come back to you all because it would require some commitment of, at least in concept, of match funds. So we would back in front of you with more details between now and then.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have just a handful of dates to mention real quick. On 9/12, which is a Wednesday, at 9:30 will be the South Garner High School ribbon cutting ceremony. And some of these I've mentioned before, but just as a matter of reminder. And then on 9/14, which is a Friday, at 6:00 PM, the Garner Consolidated High School is gonna have its 50th anniversary, and that will be held at Garnet Magnet Middle. And then on 9/16, which is a Sunday, at 1:00 PM, the town will be holding its Carnival Latino at the back lawn of the G-PAC. And that's all I have.
Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as you noted on the agenda, there is a request for a closed session. I can give details on that right now or later after reports, if you want.
Counsel, let's start with you, Craig.
Nothing right now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for arranging to get Joey Hopkins here at our last meeting. It seems like that there's more activity in and around Garner with DOT projects than I've ever heard of at one time. And I really, I'm glad you arranged that. That was most informative. I don't have the specific condo numbers, but there's a development going on on Aversboro Road around Georgetown, Georgetown Partners Condos Manor, whatever the name of it is. Where some new condos will be going up. There's a retentions, detention pond in the back. And the net result, I think, under the current design is it will, whatever overflows out of that goes on down between a couple of, a couple of units. That's the way it has been going, but it also has been in a, in an area where I'm not sure how much runoff there has been. I'm not suggesting making any changes. I would like for somebody to go back and look at that and see what the potential impact may be on that low-lying condo. It, it, it just, it looks like the way things are graded is what is just going to impact that particular facility, that particular condo. And one of them's on higher ground. These are on the backside of property. One's on higher ground, one's on much lower ground. There, to my understanding, there is a, there is an easement there, but I'm not sure if it's for stormwater or if it's for sanitary sewer. But if you just look that over one more, once more, I'd appreciate it. I'll get the specific, between the two specific units, I'll get that to you. That's all.
Kathy.
Yes, sir. Regarding trucks parking on property, like public property, I noticed Saturday, Sunday, whenever, there was about eight trucks parked in the Walmart parking lot of 401. Is that something that's under our jurisdiction or is that something? Eight-track for trailer, some of them had cabs on them, some didn't.
That'd be another situation we'd have to look into. I don't know what the regulations are for that particular property, but that's something we could take a look at.
You would, that's something I had not noticed before. I'm not that way very often, but it was quite noticeable several days in a row. And a question about the lighting at South Station. It's always been very, it's dimly lit at night. Is that, is, do our ordinances govern that facility as well? And can we require them to make those lights brighter because they're quite dark? I'm sorry, looking wrong way.
Yeah, that would be another, that would be a planning question, and I don't know if that's due by design or age or whatever.
It's always been that way, but they're very dark.
There's no mechanism in the ordinance to trigger that unless they come in with a whole-scale plan to upgrade it. We can certainly reach out to them and inquire.
Lighting standards may have been different when that was approved, possibly.
That was approved in the early, so.
Yeah.
Late 80s, so.
It's been a long time.
And the type of lighting may be different than what's used now?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a mechanism to trigger it, but we could certainly reach out.
If we could reach out and make a suggestion, it's really dark. And it seems to be worse at South Station than North Station. I mean, that could be my imagination, but it appears to be worse at South Station. And the last thing is I would like to also thank Joey Hopkins for looking into the request to have Woodland Road on the east end of it resurfaced. The information that came back was that it was at a service level 42, which meant it was in poor condition and would be added to their request for repaving in the 2019, 2020 cycle. So that's, that's much further than we've gotten before, and there's hope for the future. So appreciate Joey's work.
Dan. I feel like I probably should know the issue of this. What's the town requirements as it relates to a property? I think this is on Ran Road, a house that I think caught on fire, and it's just abandoned. And, you know, the grass is growing or whatever. I mean, does a property owner have any obligation to eventually do something with a property to demolish it or whatever?
Eventually, it would fall under minimum housing standards. That's something we would definitely have to look into. I don't know whether it's been cleared through insurance and that type of thing, but it's something we'll take a look at. I don't.
Is the house on New Ran Road, sir?
Near the newer subdivision that's been built?
Yes, yes, it is. It would be on the right as you're going out. I didn't get the address.
If it's the house I'm thinking about, Mr. Beasley and his staff have been in contact with that owner to try to get some resolution there. And I would need to get an update from him as to where we stand with that, but it is on their radar. I just don't know the.
Right.
It seems like it's been. The path to resolution.
Yeah, in that state for some time. Good, if you'll check into that, I appreciate it. That's all I have for it, Mr. Mayor. Bill, could it work out?
Uh, we need to have a closed session pursuant to NCGS.
Assistant, town attorney. All in favor, vote by SNI.
Aye.
We're assumed to be in closed session.